Did she get, um, speaking?
She's on the same attendee.
Alright, so she is.
So do remove.
She's on the attendee as well as showing on screen.
What's the minimum we need for a quorum?
Alright, if I have you?
Yes, let's make sure.
You're running the show again.
I guess so. Craig, can you hear us?
Who's on the panel?
He would need to unmute himself to respond. Analyst, we have.
Craig, if you're there, please unmute and let us know you can hear us.
So you have to be on.
Unmute. How about now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Hey, good enough. No, just you can just, um, because there's no public comments in this session, so you can just leave it on panelists or just hide it. Thanks, Joe. Okay, we can, we have a quorum now, so we can start whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready when you're ready.
Okay, cool. And I will call the, I will call the July 21st Cottonwood Heights Planning Commission work meeting to order. And I am sitting in for Chris, Commissioner Coates, who is out again. And today we are going to review the business items are the, we have one reas, let's see, request for a conditional use permit in the off residential office zone. And then we have the text amendment on short-term rentals. And then we have the ADU discussion.
Yeah.
Is there a preference on which order you want to go through those, Mike?
No, however, the conditional use, the applicant has withdrawn that application. So, so we can just know, he just withdrew late yesterday, so he's not going to pursue that right now.
Okay.
There was some feedback that, you know, where you're changing a use from residential to commercial, you have to provide parking plans and accessibility plans and things like that. And he's not quite ready to do that. So, so he withdrew for now. He may be back at a later date. So that one will not be discussed tonight. And we can just announce in the business meeting that that item's been withdrawn.
Okay.
And he'll need to completely reapply if he wants to come back at a future date.
Right.
So then it's up to the commission. I have probably more to say on accessory dwelling units because we haven't talked about it yet. But if there are any questions from the last meeting about the, uh, the short-term rental ordinance and why we're pursuing that and, and the red lines that we've presented, we can talk about that as well. If they're legal related questions, it's probably better to wait for Shane to get here. But maybe I'll just touch on that quickly and then we can come back if there are questions. I'm going to put the ordinance up on the screen here. Okay. That, so the short-term rental ordinance, as we discussed at the last meeting, there's been a desire by the city council to explore a text amendment to our short-term rental ordinance as one, one portion of the city's effort in improving enforcement of illegal short-term rentals in single-family residential areas. As we gave an overview last time, um, the, there are short-term rentals allowed in certain areas of the city, mainly in private developments and multifamily zone areas. Um, that's not, this ordinance works great for those. We don't have any issues there. We, we hardly ever have violations or concerns with the legally licensed units. It's the illegal units that pop up in all the single-family residential neighborhoods that cause us issues. Uh, and as we discussed as a quick recap for you, Commissioner Anderson, the enforcement's very difficult. In largely due to how we are required to enforce these types of violations. Uh, at the state code level, we are not allowed to, um, to use short-term rental websites as a basis for enforcement. So, so just posting a property on a website per the state code is not reason enough to enforce. So what we have to do, which is very labor intensive, is send the code enforcement division out to, um, to try to gather evidence of a violation. You essentially build a case and you present that case in, uh, in the justice court to a judge who then determines the penalty. So we have maximum penalties in the ordinance, but what we've noticed is it's very time intensive to collect the evidence. The court process takes a long time and leaves a lot of people frustrated. And then often at the end of that, the penalty is nowhere near the maximum allowed in our codes. So that's kind of the other side that we're still, you know, looking for ways to improve in terms of enforcement. But tonight, what we're considering is a, an amendment to the actual written ordinance portion of it, just to clarify a few things. To, uh, to get rid of any confusion that may be out there, to clarify that short-term rentals are illegal in residential areas. One of the options we'd like to put in front of the planning commission is how to define short-term rentals. In the current ordinance, it's defined as more than three, but fewer than 30 days. So any rental between three and 30 days. Elsewhere in the ordinance, it does say that anything less than three days is prohibited. But some, some residents have expressed confusion over that provision and felt that, um, that potentially people using this code may misinterpret that three to 30 to think if I'm renting my house for less than three days, it's allowed. So Shane has drafted two alternative definitions here. One is keeping the three to 30 days and specifying right within that definition that fewer than three is prohibited. The other is, um, almost directly consistent with the state code, which is just anything fewer than 30 days is a short-term rental. I got some feedback from the police department and the police chief from the code enforcement perspective, and they, they stated their preference is just fewer than 30. The rationale they gave was they felt that there could be reasonable, reasonable doubt, um, if someone were, uh, were caught violating the ordinance, that they could misinterpret that fewer than three days under the current definition is allowed because of how it's written. So the police department felt that, um, it's, it's the simplest solution to match the state code definition. From a staff perspective and a city attorney perspective, we feel, um, you know, the language here is, is strong enough to, to go either way. So we just like the commission's recommendation on that, that we can take forward to the council.
Do you know the reason why it was originally written the way it is?
I think, um, you know, this was years ago before Airbnb and VRBO was so prevalent. And I believe the rationale, and I'm guessing a little bit here, was that fewer than three, that, that night-to-night rental, the city council at the time felt that a hotel was the most appropriate place for those very short-term rentals, um, to be located. Now, society's changed a little bit and Airbnb is, is much more prevalent now. So circumstances have changed a little, but I think it, um, dealt with that. I think it was, and it does reference that here. Um, you know, it says, you know, basically use a hotel motel bed and breakfast or something else for fewer than three.
I thought there was the issue of where, where short-term rentals are allowed, which is in those specific zones with a permit, that the city council did not want those short-term rentals to be fewer than three days based on.
Yes, yeah, that is true as well.
So now are we, are we saying that where there is a permitted short-term rental, that we would still like it to be between three and 30?
Well, that's, that's, that's what's being discussed tonight is do we want to change that to just fewer than 30? Or, or keep it three to 30? I think you're right from that perspective of these illegal units in residential zones. This definition doesn't really matter because they're just flat out illegal. But I think the perspective the, the police gave was someone may use the argument if they were caught renting an illegal unit saying, well, it says three to 30, I'm only renting for two nights. And try to, you know, cast that doubt and get a favorable judgment. Whether that would happen or not, I don't know. But, but I think that's kind of part of that rationale.
Hey, just so you know, we're having a streaming issue. So if people start texting you, it says it's online, but it's not actually online.
Okay.
It's not streaming on Mixer, but it's working on Zoom.
People can join this. So we've got that link. Okay, thank you. So, so that's kind of one of the items we'd like feedback on. A lot of this is the same subsection C here under where permitted. Again, this is already stated in here, but, um, we're emphasizing it clearly that short-term rentals are strictly prohibited and illegal in the R1 residential neighborhoods in the city. So, so just reemphasizing that here. And then we have, uh, an exception section. Yeah. So, so the concern here was we've seen some, and, and not a ton, but we've seen a strategy out there of people operating short-term rentals and having renters sign leases that are 30 or more days and then just terminating the lease after two days or three days or four days or whatever. That's a challenge. Um, so there's just clarification added in here that any rental of more than 30 days in duration is, is bona fide and not a sham designed to avoid classification of such rental as a short-term rental under this chapter. So again, trying to just point out, hey, no loopholes. And people will do what they will do. But, um, again, clarification. And then finally, the last thing was emphasizing.
Can, can we go back to that?
Sure.
So I understand that we're, we're pointing that out, but it's almost a prescriptive, like here's, here's how to get around it. We don't have any definition of bona fide or not a sham anywhere, right? This is all very subjective.
Well, I think there's language in there that talks about shams or.
Yeah, there, there may be, and, and we can have Shane respond to that. This was drafted by the city attorney. So I, you know, it would be drafted from the perspective of, you know, is this presented?
Can you hear me? Cause I think section B right there says a short-term rental should not include any rental of the same property if it occurs more than once in a 30-day period.
Yeah. So again.
I, I thought that was very clear. When I read that, I thought at least we have an answer that, that we're saying it's a sham. We know it's a fake. And, and in fact, if you rent, now look, I'm in the rental business. I have people sometimes who move in and then turn around and move out. And if I were in Cottonwood Heights and if I were really trying to do that, I could be caught by that sometime saying, gosh, I can't re-rent my apartment for 30 days, but I think that's a price one might have to pay.
Yeah, uh, appreciate that comment. I, I think the totality of this is designed so that if, if this is presented in, in the justice court, there's not a lot of wiggle room to try to reason or, or say I was confused by the ordinance and, and try to get around it that way. There's always a challenge in providing the evidence to prove that these types of mechanisms are in place and that will always be there. But this is again, just trying to clarify what was already prohibited, but in more plain language.
Don't we all acknowledge that excluding the, you know, up to three days rentals reduces the total number overall of the short-term rentals.
Excluding, so the one, two and three night rentals?
Language is just drafted now. So that you cannot have a short-term rental from one to three days. Means we're going to have that gross overall fewer short-term rentals.
My issue with that is if you've got a permit, I would rather not limit the person with the permit to rent out for one or two days. I don't know that I would see a significant difference in the neighborhood. I mean, I don't, I don't know if it would have a, I don't know why we would prevent a one or two-night rental for someone who has a permit.
I, I think the, I think the, the ordinance was written in a time way before and, and in this fast-moving world, way before is two years, but way before the prevalence of the Airbnb kind of things. And so they were trying to be careful about not hindering somebody and that kind of thing, but we absolutely should just adopt that state language. It's, it's anything less than 30 days, period.
Commissioner Wild, I think you have a point is if, if you have to rent for 30 days and now that's taken away, you could have, instead of one rental in three days, you could have three in three days. Where the units are allowed though, right now are all in private, uh, private developments, HOA regulated developments.
Right.
That, that may have additional standards that, that their renters need to adhere to. Um, and in the traffic and parking issue doesn't become then a city issue. It's always that private development issue. For that high turnover, I think that could have an impact on traffic and trips in the neighborhood and, you know, people in and out. But where you have these, in the legal areas, so highly concentrated, uh, with short-term rentals, all of the legal areas have, I think, more units than not that are short-term rentals right now. You know, I don't, I don't know that you'd see a major change one way or the other, uh, if you change the definition.
I'm not even sure you'd be able to tell. I mean.
Well, this may be happening right now. We don't know. We don't hear about it and, and we don't get complaints about the legal units having fewer than three days. So.
Typical Airbnb weekend rentals, Friday, Saturday, checking out Sunday. And then.
Yeah, yeah, the weekend rental kind of thing. So again, um, you know, I think not a huge impact to the, our legal units really either way. If we keep the same definition we have today, it's always been that way for these legal units. Uh, will continue to be that way. Again, we feel, uh, that the language is clear enough to say fewer than three is just outright prohibited. But, yeah, that's, it, it's kind of a, a preference and that's what we're looking for guidance.
We know how many instances have been taken to the JP court.
I don't have that information. Uh, we could try to track it down and the code enforcement division certainly will.
So it could be one and it could be 50.
Yeah, I, I know the calls, uh, go up a lot in the fall and the winter months. The most recent one was not in either of those. It was in, you know, April or May and that, I don't know the outcome of that, but that was taken to court recently. And, and as we said last time, there are a lot of units that we get calls on and, and go out to enforce and they voluntarily comply. So there are people that legitimately didn't know that, that they can't operate an Airbnb. Once they're informed of that, uh, it's, they, they shut it down and it's voluntary. Now, I don't know if they resume it again later, but, um, we, we don't hear a lot of repeat cases there. We do have the, the problem properties that, that defiantly operate these rentals, even though they know the rules. And that's why it's so difficult. It's just a blatant illegal use and the people that cause the most issues are doing it intentionally and, and usually have strategies to subvert the ordinance and make enforcement difficult.
So if I'm the next door neighbor to one of those, what's my option other than just call and talk to the ordinance people?
The direction that are, I'm going to use this recent example, that the direction that we gave, and, and we being the code enforcement officer assigned to the case was take pictures, provide evidence, call me when you see something going on. I'll call, stop by the property. We're going to talk to the property owner. And in that case, the property owner willingly told the city, yeah, I know this is illegal, but I'm doing it anyways. Uh, but, but it's, it's that, that time-consuming and labor-intensive enforcement process of trying to justify and prove that it's not a, a family member living in a basement or staying for the weekend. It is truly a short-term rental.
As I look at the findings and purpose, the short-term rental statute describes all this, any of evil things that happened with the short-term rentals. And I would imagine that if I was a neighbor to one of them, uh, I would cite this and say, that's exactly what the issue is. It was, it's what it's like living next to one of these folks. And I compare that to, uh, the definition that I find in the nuisance statute. And it sounds to me like they pretty much overlap. So shouldn't the private citizen who has one of these next to them or has one of these interfering with the use of his property be able to, uh, go down to the court and, uh, file a nuisance action on his own?
I am, uh, not an attorney, so I don't think I'm qualified to answer that question. But Shane, if you've got any thoughts on this.
Um, I guess my first thought is that I suspect that most of these people already have a private cause of action under their a covenant's conditions and restrictions on there. Some divisions, that's probably more clear. And, uh, method of private enforcement, um, we have, I think, in, uh, in, uh, chapter, chapter of our code, chapter 905, I think it is a, uh, a private, uh, right of action for enforcement of, of nuisances. So I don't know that that's ever been been done by anyone. I, I haven't ever heard about it. If, if it has, and I, uh, I'm not quite sure whether somebody may get, get down the road on that and find out that, uh, maybe that wasn't valid delegation of, uh, city's authority to enforce this ordinance, but ordinances, but, uh, that's something we kind of, that's a remedy that we kind of inherited from Solak County when we did our code. Dug into it very much. So probably need to, need to do that. But, uh, I guess I go back to my first, first point and I, I suspect that given how, uh, how and when Cottonwood Heights was, uh, developed mainly with subdivisions that, uh, came along after the concept of recorded CCNRs against subdivision was, uh, was a thing. And that, uh, they almost certainly restrict use in those subdivisions to single-family use. That's, that might be a little, little bit more clear way for somebody who is inclined to enforce privately.
You seem to look around for someone with a lot of time on their hands.
I mean, my, my own subdivision, uh, this is what a geek I am. I, I was, uh, recorded in about 1949 and there are CCNRs on it. And they say exactly that. I always done quite a bit of real estate work, probably as, as Commissioner Wild has done as well. And, and that's, uh, that would be a fairly fundamental thing to fundamental condition to put into that, that sort of thing, residential subdivision.
So, um, just to wrap up the, the other items here, we can come back and discuss anything. We have also clarified, again, this was already in the ordinance, but included in this section by reference rather than direct language. For short-term rentals found operating without a permit, so illegal rentals. They, we've clarified here, they are punishable by a maximum punishment or, uh, violation, classy misdemeanor. In line with the Utah code, uh, for that type of punishment. And then each day that any violation continues is a separate offense. Which again, then is that package is taken to the court and the judge decides, you know, the, the extent of that punishment to levy against the violator. And that's where we've seen them come in way under, um, what's, what the maximum allowed is. And that's a little bit out of our control. But we've put the clear language in here that if you're operating this illegally, here's, here's what you could be looking at.
So Mike, what brings this to our attention now rather than last year or next year?
Yeah. Uh, so, so like I said, we get, uh, a handful of these complaints every year, some, uh, you know, more persistent than others. Um, most recently though, there, there was a neighborhood and I think many of them were at the last commission meeting to share public comment that were dealing with a defiant property owner operating one of these knowingly and illegally. And I think there was a lot of neighborhood frustration around that property owner and what they were doing. And that neighborhood kind of organized and approached the city council and the mayor and, and scheduled meetings and, and it rose to the level of, of the mayor and council deciding to discuss it at a council work session and directing staff to look for ways to clarify the ordinance and, and improve enforcement. So that's, that's why it's in front of us now as opposed to last year in the future.
In, in regards to the problematic property, it's my understanding that they, that property was cited repeatedly.
Yep.
So does this, does this change anything? Or is it just a clarification point?
Well, I think.
In terms of the application specific to this one issue?
No, I think except for the definition of short-term rental, um, all of the proposed changes tonight are clarification or, uh, making things more, uh, more.
Augmentation.
Yeah. To just, because again, and as we've told the city council this as well, the, the ordinance itself is not the issue. Because. Because where the ordinance is applicable, the ordinance works very well. It's just straight up illegal uses that that could be. You know, a short-term rental where it's not allowed is an illegal use, just, you know, just like. You know, for running a retail business out of a house, that's an illegal use. The code doesn't cover that and these regulations don't really apply other than they say. Hey, it's illegal and punishable by these fees and penalties. So the enforcement process is definitely the part that leads to more frustration. But its design i- is kind of cumbersome and like I said, labor intensive. And often doesn't give us a satisfactory resolution that really disincentivizes continued violation. Now, in this case, that's, that sparked a list. I don't know what the resolution was. I do believe that rental was taken off the market. But, but I don't know what the court, if any fees were levied against the property owner or anything like that. So, so this is kind of the minor part of this, but something we feel we could do to just clarify language. And make it very clear, these are not allowed in single-family areas.
I've had two thoughts since our last conversation two weeks ago about this. And trying to think about mechanisms that we have in place to deal with this above and beyond the code. Which maybe we are wasting our time discussing, but. I would be interested to know if there's a way for Cotwood Heights as municipality to approach Airbnb and VRBO. To require that the property owners publish their permit. Or, or the other way around, just say that they don't have a permit. So that, so that I as a renter in a free market. Can decide whether or not I want to rent from someone who has a permit or not. And I, I don't, I tried to look into this quickly, but I didn't have enough time, but. I, I think there might be municipalities or regions that. Are, have more rentals than others, maybe Hawaii or something, that have figured out a way to. To publish the permit or to have to list the permit. And if that's the case, if we could join that, if we could be another one of those groups. That says we're a municipality that requires publishing, publishing permit number as part of the application, then we should. The second idea I've had is if there's a way. That, that the consequence. Or the enforcement of the violation is. Somehow made more negative towards the renter than the owner. Then the renter is likely to leave a negative comment and these places. Survive based off of comments and ratings. And I don't know what happens to the rent. I assume. The code enforcer knocks on the door and the renter answers the door. And then I don't know what happens after that, but if the renter could somehow be negatively impacted. Not that I'm like wishing that on an innocent renter, but. That would be a means of triggering more negative remarks and. Maybe having an impact under the mechanism, mechanism that we have in front of us to help prevent this. Those are the only two.
So I have a. Kind of some information on one of the points. So in other areas, like most of DC and surrounding neighborhoods in Maryland did this. There was moratorium originally and then I, they figured out a process for it forward. And if you go out to like Airbnb, like you can drill down into the actual area or city or county or whatever else to say. And they actually publish what the processes and whatnot, but whether or not that's tied to the individual rentals, I don't think so. And there's, but they're supposed to be, there's. Between the property owner and Airbnb and whatnot, they're supposed to validate the short-term rental permit. Aspect of that, but some of that just could be a communication thing with Airbnb and VRBO and that they don't understand that it's not allowed. You know, a hundred percent of the jurisdiction in Cotwood Heights. So it's probably something that we could explore in terms of just that communication aspect.
Yeah, and ideally this would just be automated, but if I put my house on the market. That the GIS database recognizes I'm a single-family residential. And flags me to Airbnb and it simply says, you know, not a permitted use. And then the renter gets notified that they, they're choosing to rent something.
Yeah, so, so. Just scroll down also. So the, there is actually, at least on Airbnb, there's a listing display requirement. For, for those areas that they, they have to list the valid short-term rental license number on any listing. And whether or not Airbnb validates that, whatever, I have no idea, but there is some mechanism there in which there seems to be that, that. That cross validation between their Airbnb and the host. But they just may not be aware that, that it's not completely allowable in the municipality at this point. You know, they're, I'm sure from their point of view until they're told otherwise.
Yeah.
They want to generate the revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, certainly things I can look into. I don't, I don't think I have an answer on either of those right now, but. You know, definitely could be prepared to come back to another planning commission meeting or, or, or do that research as we take this to council.
So one of, one of the other things that they did in, in those areas that I found interesting and I don't, I don't know. How people would feel, but one of the requirements from, for the short-term rental process itself was a neighbor notification. Where you had to actually notify all your neighbors and receive responses from that of, I'm going to be. Putting this on for, for whatnot. So at least they were notified. But I don't, I don't think in our, in ours that we have any mechanism for that.
No, but I think we have the same issue there. So when we issue the legal, the licensed units, it's a, there's a, what's called an administrative public hearing. So it's.
Does it go to all the neighbors?
There's a three hundred foot mailing notice and it's posted legally and there's a public hearing. That we hold. Again, we have this issue with illegal units. There's no hearing, they're not allowed. So, so we do have that for areas where it is allowed. And again, those, no one ever comes to those because everyone else around them has.
The same thing.
Licenses as well.
The signs are pretty normal.
Yeah. And same thing, they have display requirements. They have to display that they have a short-term rental permit or license. But when, when you go on Airbnb and look and, and see. Search Cotwood Heights, very few of them have pictures of the outside of the house or addresses or anything. It's, you know, you book it and you call the property owner and they tell you where to show up. So we can look into those things and try to have good feedback for the commissioner for the city council. So, so that's all I have for this tonight. You know, I anticipate we may get some more public comments probably from the same group of neighbors tonight, but. That's where we are on this. We, at least for this side of it, we view this ordinance as, as. More cleanup and clarification than anything else. So. You know, ready to take direction there. If, if we want to come back and discuss it more, happy to do that. Or make a recommendation to the council. I'm going to share, move on to ADUs now. That is. They're so bad. I could eat those tortillas just for plain, just.
Where's, was that, where's?
Capping.
Oh, yeah.
Or is it? That was cat for real. Yeah. Okay. So accessory dwelling units, we. For those that have been on the commission for a few years, seems like we just stopped talking about this not that long ago. The city a couple of years ago proposed an accessory dwelling unit ordinance to allow long-term rentals and owner occupied properties throughout the city. Planning commission recommended approval. The city council ultimately denied that ordinance. But it is back now because at the most recent state legislative session, the Utah legislature voted to. To allow ADUs internal accessory dwelling units as permitted uses in every single-family residential zone in the state of Utah. And internal accessory dwelling unit is, is an ADU created within the footprint of a home. So it's not the, you know, the tiny home in the backyard. It's not a detached structure that's allowed by this bill. So those internal units. This, this portion of the bill is effective October first, so that's why it's, it's coming to you tonight. We probably need a rec, I'm not expecting a recommendation tonight, but we will need one in two weeks in August. To give the council enough time to talk about it and consider it and adopt it before October. Because it's effective that date, whether we have an ordinance or not.
We lost your audio.
Happened yesterday. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Thanks.
Yeah, this, yeah. If your thing is red, just push it. This happened at city council.
Did we get hacked?
So, so we cannot regulate the size of an ADU, the total lot size with an exception or street frontage or anything like that. And actually what the, the legislation says is, it says unless specifically provided in this section, a municipality may not regulate or prohibit ADUs. We are allowed to ensure that ADUs comply with applicable building health and fire code standards. And there's a new provision in there that. If, if an ADU is proposed and the window of any new bedroom is not up to code for egress standards. We can require that update to current code, whether the window's been existing previously or not. And as I said, there were some building code amendments adopted by the state legislature. Mainly because previously some cities treated ADUs like, like twin homes or multifamily dwellings. And required full fire separation and separate HBAC systems. So the, the state legislature has softened those requirements. The fire separation is, is not as restrictive. There do not have to be essentially climate controls in the ADU and in the primary dwelling. And they can share a ventilation system now.
How does what they have compared to what we created?
What we created at the time was, is same language. You have to comply, comply with all applicable building code standards. Because the state adopts the building code, we just defer to that, but now the state has come in and adopted modifications to the building code. So. It's changed in the sense that the state changed. So here is essentially what we may do as a municipality in terms of regulating internal ADUs. We can require a permit or a license, so we know where these are and we can inspect them. We can require owner occupancy. To, to happen on the site, meaning the, the owner of record has to permanently reside at that property. Can't be an absentee owner renting two halves of a house to two different families. We can prohibit multiple utility meters. We can require ADU design in a manner consistent with single-family dwellings. The reason there's an asterisk here is there's another bill that was passed that says. We can't regulate single-family residential design standards. So, so there's some. You know, there's some conflicting information there, but. We can require one additional off-street parking space. The last ordinance we proposed was two. But we were not able to, to require two anymore. It's just one. And that's in addition to what's already required for single-family dwelling, which is two stalls. So three total. We can prohibit ADUs in mobile homes on a property or on properties with failing septic systems. The next one is, is, I'm a little confused by this, but we are not proposing this. Municipal may prohibit ADUs in a zoning district. Covering twenty-five percent or less of the city's residential zones and where staff is a little confused as whether that could be. A chunk of a zoning district or if the entire zoning district has to be twenty-five percent or less of the city's entire residential zoning coverage.
Is there any language in the bill about contiguous?
No, no, no direction beyond basically what's written there. However, we are not proposing to do that. You know, we, we feel there would need to be a, an objective or a geographic reason or characteristic to do that. And. You know, parking is a big one. So say you have a public street that's very narrow, you know, maybe that's the reason to look at it. But all of our public streets are, are. More or less. The same standard and up to code and accessible. Private streets are privately regulated and enforced. So, so we are not proposing to limit ADUs anywhere in the city except. For lots less than six thousand square feet in size, which is what we are allowed to do by this legislation. We may prohibit short-term rentals in ADUs. And somewhat in contradiction to our previous discussion, if. We have record of an ADU on a property. And we see that same property on Airbnb.com or VRBO, then we can use that as a basis of enforcement. But only if there's record of an ADU on that property. Same challenges exist because they often don't have pictures or addresses, but. We are able to use websites in that case. There's a very extensive process that allows municipalities to hold a lien on properties in violation of, of this bill. And in any case, we can record a notice of ADU against the property title essentially. Saying this property has an ADU on it that would pull in a title search. And we would require that to be updated if ownership of the house changes.
Can, can you go back on the third bullet on the, on the multiple utility meters? How would a house that has a regular electric line and a separate electric line for an EV vehicle be interpreted on that?
Well, the EV chargers are still off the main meter. So, so the city would need to issue a permit for a separate utility meter. And if that came in through the building permit desk, we wouldn't allow it today. So they just wouldn't change. Single-family residents can only have one utility meter on their property.
What do we understand is the purpose or the result of recording a notice of ADU against the time? That formal lien so that we can collect tax or what?
I think more than anything is to disclose in a property transaction, if. If a property is listed as having an ADU during that title search, there will be certification from the city that it has an ADU and has obtained licenses and permits. You know, just, just so there's information out there. That at whatever time that notice was recorded, that ADU met local regulation and met ordinance. That's certainly what our intention and interest in doing that is, is just to provide that extra disclosure.
Is there any limit to what we can charge for a fee? I mean, are we, are we thinking that as a city, we're going to. Be impacted negatively financially because of this, or is their ability to, to make the, the permit? I mean, it's a toss-up because if you make it too high, then nobody's going to do it.
So I'll cover that in, in a minute when we go through the draft language, but basically we are requiring. If work is needed on the property, they'll need to get a building permit and they pay that fee and that covers inspection and everything. If, if the claim is made that work, additional work is not needed and the property is up to code, we are still requiring that. A minimum over the counter building permit fee be issued and we do a walkthrough inspection to just make sure. Which is forty, it's like fifty dollars and that covers the cost of that inspection in that time. And, and then we would license these as well and there may, it'd be a minor, an administrative cost to process the license. But, you know, fifty dollars or a hundred dollars or something like that. This is interesting to point out. HOA enforcement, as it is written today, and I think, you know, there may be challenges to this, but this is as the bill is written today. Private homeowners associations cannot prohibit ADUs that otherwise comply with all of the, the standards that we've talked about. And that applies proactively and retroactively. So if there's language in, in a CCNR document that says ADUs are not allowed. Per this new legislation, that is no longer applicable. Okay, so now I'm going to quickly pull up the proposed ordinance. And at the direction of the council. Where we started with this was the, where we ended last time was, was with the ordinance that we had worked on and gotten. We had a joint city council planning commission open house and did a lot of research and work on that previous ordinance. So that's the ordinance we started with. And essentially made changes or deletions if something was no longer allowed to be enforced. Share this. We'll go through this. I had highlights. There are highlights in, in the printed packets. That, that generally, I might have missed some, but the highlights are generally what's changed from last time. But, but I'll start just with the purpose statement. A lot of this is unchanged. The one purpose statement we added is, is, you know, the purpose of this ordinance is to comply with the new state regulations regarding ADUs. We've updated some. We've updated some definitions to be consistent with the definitions in the state legislation now. So the def, definition of accessory dwelling unit and primary dwelling, um, are, are consistent with what's in the state language now. So where permitted, we've, we've made some clarifications in this section here. And we've clarified that internal ADUs are permitted in primary dwellings under owner occupancy and lots over six thousand square feet in any single-family residential zone in the city. And, and again, we've clarified internal ADUs are prohibited on lots containing six thousand or fewer square feet. Or on lots where the primary dwelling is served by a valued septic tank. Um, internally, use in eligible areas are allowed as permitted uses. And actually, not much of that is very different than what our previous, uh, ordinance proposed. We were proposing to allow them in all single-family zones before. So the clarifications we've added are the six thousand square foot lots and the septic tank, uh, limitations. We have also left in the previous provisions for detached ADUs. That is, that can be fully regulated. That can be stricken and removed. The, the legislation doesn't guide us on detached ADUs. So the language for detached dwelling units are, is the same as it was before. And I'll get into some of the standards, uh, regarding those.
So why, why are we, I mean, I, I know why we're not, because we're not being required. But what about like residential office and multi, or the, um, what's the R two eight?
Yeah. So the, the rationale there is those, those already allow for multifamily uses.
Oh, they already allow for it.
So an R two eight, a, a, a single property in R two eight can have two families on it. So if we allowed ADUs, then you'd essentially have four families on an R two eight property, uh, potentially. So, so we haven't, uh, made any changes on that. Where we started last time is we just want to focus in the single-family areas. So we don't want to have two dwelling units on an eight thousand square foot lot become four. Then parking and things like that do become very constrained.
Okay. So what is our inclination on the external ADUs?
Well, uh, s- staff supports it because we did before and, and that's not changing. But in, in a nutshell, where, where detached ADUs are allowed with the development standards, they require a conditional use permit from the planning commission. They require parking, two parking stalls, non-tandem, um, not in the front yard of a property. Um, so you need to have a side pad or a, a rear yard parking area. The parking needs to be fenced or buffered, uh, from visual, uh, from view of neighboring properties. And then for a detached ADU, the setbacks, the height of a detached ADU has to be the, the same height as a, uh, like a shed or an accessory dwelling, which is twenty feet max, but more often fourteen. But the setbacks for a detached ADU have to be the same setback as a home, which is like the twenty to thirty and at least ten on the sides.
Do you have a square foot limitation?
Um, just as, same limitation as detached structures, which is a, has to be, um, smaller than the home and the total coverage of the backyard cannot exceed twenty-five percent. So they're very strict standards for detached ADUs. And in practice, the only places you could feasibly see those is in very large lot properties, half acre plus, that feasibly have the capacity to accommodate a, a rear driveway and parking area and things like that. So we, we left it in and we still support that. It's a, it's a fairly rigorous process to get that approved. And that does require conditional use from the planning commission. So then we've updated, um, just the approval process for internal ADUs. And this is what we're saying, you know, we have an application form. So, um, we are, we are requiring, which we're allowed to do is a, uh, the notice of ADU to be recorded. A building permit, at least a minimum permit to do a walkthrough, uh, a, a license, uh, that, that that can be renewed annually, um, to ensure that, that we know where these are at any given time. A process for, um, a change of ownership on a property to update the license so we know who the owner of record is. And requirements to verify owner occupancy, um, that, that, who says the, the owner on the site is actually the, the resident that resides there year-round. And then again, completely differently, a detached ADU is a conditional use. Requires a conditional use fee, requires a client commission here. So under, well, I lost some of the text here, so we might have to just go off the, uh, packet here. But under development standards, again, we have, um, kept the same development standards in there wherever we can and made modifications, uh, to the internal ADU process. Um, the, the biggest one to bring up here is the parking. We've changed our two parking lot requirement to be one parking lot to be compliant with code. However, and this was again at the, the request of the council. The one parking stall we are requiring to be non-tandem, so it cannot be located directly behind one of the two required parking stalls for the single-family dwelling. So if you, if you have a two-stall garage, that you'd need a parking pad off to the side or somewhere else. So you're not blocking one of the regular parking stalls. We, we do feel, we got some feedback, um, from the League of Cities and Towns and feel that is allowable under this legislation. So that's the language that's built in, is only one stall, but it can't be, um, a tandem stall. We've had to remove though, the requirement for the parking to be in the side yard or in the rear yard for internal ADUs. And the requirement for a fence or some sort of visual screen or buffer from the adjacent property.
Didn't even, didn't we even get into like what the surface of that needed to be?
Yeah, now we do have a parking standard, so, so you can't park on lawn. That's not a parking stall. So, and we have that elsewhere in the ordinance and that will still apply. Uh, but it's, it's less defined as it was than it was before.
Sorry if you, sorry you said this and I just missed it, but what about building on top of an existing garage, like a mother-in-law?
So what the legislation says is an ADU has to be, an internal ADU has to be created from the existing building footprint at the time the application was made for the ADU. So someone could do that. They would just have to do it in the right order. They have to come in and get the building permit and, and do an addition above their garage. And then when that's done, they can come in and get the license for an ADU. We can require that if someone converts a garage into an internal ADU, that they have to provide that lost parking elsewhere on the site.
What would happen if it was a detached garage and then they built a second-story addition on top of it? Would it be considered an external?
Yeah, that's a detached ADU, yeah. Cause it's, it's, it's within the footprint of the primary dwelling on the property. So that, if they wanted to use it as a detached ADU, would have to come through planning commission. Uh, we've also, we had a, a, a land, I don't know what to call it, a landlord certification process before. Good landlord programmed that. We can't do that anymore, so that's been deleted.
That was a bunch of waste of time.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so that's gone.
That was like two weeks on that topic, I remember.
Uh, and again, we, uh, we do not recommend, uh, and, and I feel strongly about this, that we should pursue restricting ADUs in any one area of the city over another. Looking at our city, we don't have any, you know, special historic districts or narrow public streets that would merit, um, prohibiting ADUs over, over anywhere else in the city. So we think it's most equitable to allow these everywhere. And that's what we were proposing to do last time as well. So we, we are not proposing to utilize that twenty-five percent restriction anywhere.
It seems like the twenty-five percent thing, when I read it, but, and you guys have read it and changed your way in. But it seems to me like it's talking about other zoning districts other than residential.
Mixed uses.
Yeah, like mixed use or TOD or something that are less than twenty-five percent of the single family. So if you compile all the area of the single family and then you take those smaller zones, you can't.
Yeah. Yeah, I, you know, there, there's, you know, at conferences and in discussions with other municipalities, there's, there's different, uh, definitions of what this means. So some are pursuit, are interpreting it as, we can just take any twenty-five percent of any zone and, you know, doesn't have to be contiguous, can be anywhere and just prohibit them there. Um, you know, I don't, I don't feel comfortable necessarily with that, uh, interpretation. And we, we've heard from many that are not, they're just not proposing to touch that provision at all. Um, but I, I don't know. I'm sure some are pursuing that, but, um, but we don't recommend doing that.
I, I wasn't present for the, um, discussion historically on the ADU, say, at council. Was there enough writing theme of why it was voted down before?
Um, at the city council, it was parking.
Okay.
Uh, that was, I, I think the predominant, um, concern, uh, among the council was, was parking. And, and certain council members had constituents that felt strongly they shouldn't be allowed and, and just wanted to represent that and, and voted no for that reason. But there were some, uh, some disagreements over how parking should be regulated. And largely that authority has been, uh, scaled back greatly now. So, so that's a, a high-level summary, but really it's, we took the same ordinance as before and made the changes that are in line with the new state legislation. Uh, we are still, like I said, proposing detached ADUs, so the commission can weigh in on that. But from staff's perspective, with how restrictive they've been designed, uh, a, and where we think they would ever occur, um, w- we do still support, uh, adding that language in here.
But in, in, in theory, someone could ask for an exception under the third conditional use permit at, at the time of application.
Uh, for a detached ADU?
Yeah, if they're not being full compliance.
No, we would recommend denial. Conditional use has to meet ordinance. It, it has to meet code. And if it doesn't meet code, um, it, it, it's not entitled to approve. If it meets code, it's entitled to approve.
Yeah, but I mean, they could, they could go through the process asking for.
They, they sure could ask for a variance or something like that, but we wouldn't not, we wouldn't recommend, because our standards are very clearly written here.
No, it's, I mean, the, the parking restriction is gonna greatly restrict the, the number and types of properties.
Yeah, parking and setbacks and, and all of that, yep. How was the public noticed that this was gonna be on the agenda tonight? So we talked about this with the city council and then we noticed this as we do any other citywide notice. We, we post on the city website, remember subscribe to that, gets an email. Um, it's posted on a state noticing website as well. There's no mailers sent out. Um, but, but we've had numerous discussions at the city council level on this as well.
So if the October first is dropped dead?
That, so, so that's when the, the House bill, at least the, the building code is already effective.
Right.
But ADUs are allowed in residential zones, October first. Um, if the city does not have an ordinance in place by then, that's okay. They can adopt one after the fact. But any ADUs that were started between October first and the date that ordinance was adopted are allowed. So, so we, we can't adopt it in November and then go repeal, you know, that month of, of.
And if we, if we vote, if we vote in August, council's expected to take it up in August?
We would probably introduce it in August. We, we would have three meetings.
Right.
Um, for the council to talk about it, take public comment and make a decision. Submit August and both September, we do.
But if, if we don't act and we don't have an ordinance in place in October and someone files for an ADU.
Well, in October, if, if we don't have an ordinance in place, they don't have to file.
They don't even have to file a permit, right?
Right, you can just do it.
That's right, because we're the ones enforcing the permit. That's one of, among our.
Part of our authority is we can require a permit.
Okay.
Yep.
But even though it was noticed, we haven't heard any objections or comments.
Um, I, I've talked to a few people, asking questions, uh, had some discussions about that, that twenty-five percent zoning district restriction. Um, and, and shared my, my perspective and my staff recommendation on that.
But we don't have any clear cut interpretation of that, kind of generally in, in Utah at the, at the moment?
Not that I've been able to, to ascertain, um, and, and I will fully admit that because we're not proposing it and recommending not to propose it. Uh, you know, we haven't done a, a full deep dive into it to try to get an answer, but we have asked at conferences in the League of Cities and Towns for clarification.
I bet you it gets litigated somewhere.
HOA part seems.
Yeah.
Like a nightmare. All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Wild and a second from Commissioner Ebler. Did I say that right?
Yeah, you did.
And, uh, we'll continue in the, uh, business.
We have to vote.
Oh, is everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
And just, just an FYI.